If you want more water or anything, please let us know.
No, this is fine.
Okay.
Recording in progress.
May I allow into the special meeting? Today, like I said, is Monday, February 7th, 2022. Time is now 6:25 PM. The special meeting of City Council is now in order. We have one item and a public hearing. Start off with your call, please.
DeBono.
Here.
Carrigo.
Here.
Ogultry.
Here.
Shu.
Here.
Thurman.
Williamson.
President.
Rico.
Here. At the moment, except as a public hearing, City Council lacking in its capacity as the Board of the Field. This is just a continuation. It has already been moved in second in the first two weeks ago when we had our regular meetings. So right now, it's just a continuance. And I'll repeat what the appeal is. It's an appeal of the decision of the Planning and Zoning Variance Commission filed by Southwest Development Group LLC, variance application 2021, variance 16, the five residential lots in 204, 208, 216, 312, and 321 Omadaga Street. The applicant is seeking a variance to allow a 312 roof pitch on the structures. At this point, I think we need to get you sworn in. You need to get sworn in?
No, Mayor, this is counsel. This is the attorney for the applicant. And this is Mr. Robert Land. And so I believe that Mr. Land is going to be making argument. And are you planning on calling any witnesses or just making argument?
Not, well, I didn't, there's not a lot of specific procedure for this.
You're right.
Either statute or ordinance. So my feeling was at the time for evidence was during the hearing. Although I do believe the applicant here, probably the managing member of the applicant anyway. And I believe there's another gentleman on the, well, maybe not.
There's more.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Land?
Yes.
If you wish, you may remove your mask for speaking.
Yeah, I don't want to get your hat. All right, with counsel.
That's my turn. I'm just having a couple of hearings, I'm sorry.
I appreciate that. I'm not, I'm not used to wearing masks. I reside in Texas. I've been using it for years now. So I think there's another gentleman who's present on the phone or by Zoom who is the owner of the company that manufactures, that factory builds these homes that my client proposes to erect on his lots.
And so if you plan on having any witnesses give testimony, then I would ask, we generally swear people in. So if that is okay. And who is it that you're wanting to have sworn in?
Well, it would be my client, the managing member of my client. Actually, my client is the Southwest Development Group LLC, which was the applicant.
You gotta go forward, please.
It'd be Mr. Francisco.
If you'll raise your right hand, do you swear in the affirmative testimony you're about to give us the truth of all truths and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
But it's, I hadn't planned on giving him testimony. So really, he would be kind of stressful and stressful if you were to ask a question or two.
And Mayor, if I could, please. I'd like to suggest Mr. Land is representing the appellate applicant, has the burden of production and persuasion. And he, of course, is here to argue that planning zoning made an error in denying the variance. I would ask that you allow Mr. Land to proceed accordingly. And I think he's going to begin by way of making argument. I would like to let counsel know that this memo that was in your seating place is from Mr. Land. I got this today about four o'clock in the afternoon. And this is, as he mentioned to me in the email, it's an outline of his argument. And so he provided that to us, we provided it to you. And so I just wanted to make sure you knew that. You may want to kind of follow along with the story as he goes, as I believe this is how his argument is going to proceed. But I have nothing further?
Oh, you got it exactly. My argument is going to mirror my memo. What I wanted is counsel to have something in writing that you can refer to when you deliberate, because I'm going to cover a lot of ground. And some of it's some statutory argument and then some of it's, you know, policy argument. So with that, I would like to introduce myself. My name is Robert Land. I am an attorney. I am licensed in Colorado and Texas. At the moment, I am based out of Texas. I was originally licensed in Texas. I came up to Colorado and specifically traded ad with my wife, Dixie Newnum, who some of you may know. She grew up here to raise our kids. And we opened a practice with her father, who was retiring from the bench at that time, George Newnum. He was the county court judge here for 28 years. Finished his career as a district court judge for. And then in January 2007, we opened up our law firm, Newnum Land. We practiced here for nine years, personally and mostly in the area of real estate, contract disputes and things like that, transactional and litigation. And then in January of 2016, almost the day that we moved here, nine years later, we moved to back to Texas. And we've been there for six years now. So I will say that I like where I'm at, but I, about weekly, I wish I would still practice in long Colorado. Texas is very arcanic. Anyway, so with that, and obviously, I still take clients here in Colorado. In fact, I've got another client up in North Carolina. So as counsel said, why am I here? I'm here representing my client, Southern Development Group LLC, its appeal of the planning zoning and variance commission's denial of its application for a variance to allow a 312 roof pitch on five of its lots in City View Heights subdivision. They own, my client owns eight and has built three homes there already. These homes are factory-built IRC compliant homes. So factory-built to try to achieve some economy of construction. But these are, in fact, IRC compliant homes. They meet the building code that's been adopted by City of Trinidad. So some quick background about exactly what my client is seeking from the commission is a variance from municipal code 14-67B1, which requires a 612 roof pitch on all residential structures in the city of Trinidad, blanket, regardless of what zone they're in. Be it medium density, light density, sort of like it's a medium.
Low or high.
Low density, high density, right? I think there's a very gentle zones. So specifically, the variance would allow a 312 roof pitch on the subject lots of Terminal 5, on which would construct a factory-built IRC compliant residences. The, I'll call it the PZBC for, rather. So PZBC had a hearing on December 14th of 2021. And in that hearing, it took testimony from Mr. Arqueta, who is, of course, the managing member of the LLC. It took testimony from his wife, which is another member of the LLC. It took testimony from Sky Tallman, city planner, regarding his staff report. It was generated by his office on this application. Diane Santa Steven, who owns multiple lots in City View Heights subdivision, and also Mr. Tom Larson, who lives in the neighborhood. After some deliberation in the hearing, a motion was made to deny the application based on the fact that everyone who had built houses out there, and this is a subdivision that has numerous undeveloped lots. But everybody who has built a house out there, at that time, it was 48 residences. I don't know if there's been another one since the hearing. But that everyone had lived under this ordinance. And this particular neighborhood has a, already has a variance for a 512 roof pitch. I'll get to that in a minute. But essentially, the basis of the motion for denial was that everybody out there had lived with it. So it wouldn't be fair to them to really deny it. On that basis, the motion carried by unanimous, well, not unanimous, but it was carried by significant. So obviously, I'm here to argue that the PZBC got it wrong. But it's more than just a mere difference of opinion. So what I'd like to do is just kind of run down each of the points that I'm going to make. And then I'll do a little bit deeper dive into each one, okay? So number one, the evidence put forth at the hearing supported granting the request of variance. And there was no evidence presented in opposition that addressed any of the six review criteria or really were at all relevant. I realize at a hearing before a municipal tribunal that the rules of evidence, administrative hearing, the rules of evidence are relaxed. Typically, that's to the issue of hearsay. But there were a lot of assertions made that were completely unsupported and, as it happens, irrelevant. So really, all the evidence presented at the trial, the hearing, supported granting the variance. And there was no documentary evidence in opposition. And the only two people that testified in opposition to the variance granting was Diane Santa Steven and Tom Larson. I'll get into the testimony in a minute. Second big point is the commissioners respectfully failed to properly conduct a hearing in pre-spectacular place. Number one, the commissioners at the very outset summarily rejected the basis of the application because of a misunderstanding of the basis for the request. Two, commissioners improperly testified themselves as to the cost of construction thus providing their own unsupported opinion evidence. Their own, that's opinion evidence, but it wouldn't be the evidence. But their own opinion challenging my client's assertions of increased construction costs caused by a 512 roof pitch versus a 312 roof pitch. And number three, the commissioners completely ignored any other review criteria. Those are not addressed at all, not discussed by them at all. So third major point is that a blanket 612 roof pitch requirement on all residential structures in City of Trinidad is, at its very nature, in conflict with the purpose and intent of the planning and zoning. It does jive. It frankly makes no sense if you start reading the other portions of the municipal code. The fourth way, a 612 roof pitch mandate for all residential structures in City of Trinidad is also in conflict with Colorado law and revised statute 3123301, 5BIC. That statute briefly says that no municipality shall enact an ordinance which has the effect of barring an IRC compliant home from the city, an otherwise IRC compliant home. The fifth point, City of Trinidad respectfully does not have the authority to mandate a 612 roof pitch for all residential structures who is planning and zoning powered. It's not to say the City of Trinidad could not enact something in its building code. This is not contained within the building code. It's not part of the building code. It is labeled technically as an architectural standard. And it is part of the zoning ordinances. And then finally, there is ample precedent for the granting of variances to allow for a roof pitch lower than a 612. Many of those variances recently, they don't last a couple of years, were granted due to financial hardship that a 612 roof pitch would otherwise impose. Very similar to my client's basis. So before I get into that, with the specifics of those, I want to just highlight what the city council's authority and proper approach in the sitting as the Board of Adjustment, as you call it, Board of Appeals, for an appeal or variance denial. If you want to follow along, I mess with my page on this. It's one of the first names I appear. Anyway, as the Board of Adjustment, counsel is tasked with hearing appeal to adverse decisions by the Planning, Zoning, and Variance Commission. Generally, boards of adjustment, quote, "may determine and vary an ordinance's application in harmony with its general purpose and intent." This means is you have a lot of leeway. You don't have to strictly apply, strictly interpret. So you can determine an ordinance's application in harmony with its general purpose and intent in accordance with general or specific rules contained in such regulations. So as stated in the municipal code, and this is like the first, this is actually the third entry in section 14. The central purpose of the code is to implement the goals of the comprehensive plan. You may be familiar with the comprehensive plan. It was adopted by counsel in 2017. And it sets out, it's actually on the website. And it sets out various areas of growth for the city and specific goals for each one of those. Like where are we going to go with our movements? What are we going to do to promote these goals for each of these little areas? One of them is, you know, traffic and access and things like that. One of them is neighborhoods, okay? I'll get into that a little bit more. Specifically, it says the general purpose of this code is to implement the goals as called through the City of Trinidad Comprehensive Plan. So the intent of section 14, and this is right under the purpose, stated purpose. I mean, it's literally labeled with purpose, intent, is to guide the future growth involved in the city in accordance with the comprehensive plan. It reads again, to promote infill development in existing neighborhoods. And specifically, in redevelopment areas. Now, the redevelopment areas that were designated in the comprehensive plan have been replaced. Those sort of identified areas that needed to really work on infill, promote infill. This, these subject properties were part of the redevelopment area or a redevelopment area. And since then, it's been changed. I think at the time, it was a low density residential. I think now it's been re-designated as medium density residential. But it doesn't change the fact that the comprehensive plan hasn't changed. And I can only do that by counsel. So it's still part of, in my opinion, a redevelopment area. It's still required, needs this infill promotion, right? Promotion of infill development. So next, you might be wondering, what's in the comprehensive plan? What is it? It's a blueprint for community's future. It's quote directly from the book. It is a tool to help the Trinidad community ensure that it grows, evolves in a manner that is consistent with their vision by providing guidance to property owners, current, future residents, legislative appointment officials, community boards, and commissions, developers, and city staff. This is your master plan. Among many goals, these are stated with respect to the neighborhoods there. Diversify and strengthen the housing stock for a balanced mix of unit types and price points. Number two, update the planning and zoning regulations and other policy regulatory documents for consistency with the goals and strategies of this comprehensive plan. Make it aside and say that the specific ordinance we're talking about, the 612 roof pitch, was passed in 2001. The comprehensive plan is 2017. It recognizes that the ordinances in place must necessarily promote the goals they're seeking to achieve through the plan. And specifically says they need to be updated.
And that's just your speculation, then?
No, it states that it's, you can, you can, you can look at the plan written in 2017 and.
What that states is, what that states, though, in the comprehensive plan is that periodically, the comprehensive plan shall be updated. And I think that may be what you're talking about.
Well, it says, update the land use regulations to encourage housing options. Update the planning and zoning regulations and other policy regulatory documents for consistency with the goals and strategies of the comprehensive plan. Explore opportunities for housing and redevelopment projects. Again, these subject properties were part of the redevelopment area. You can look at the mats in the back, you can see that. Or especially in the investment areas. And the last one I have here is update land use regulations and policies to support residential infill development to ensure the city is encouraging housing that is attainable and accessible to everyone. So in sum, it's a major goal of the plan, generally to promote a mix of housing, various price points, specifically, excuse me, in areas which infill development is needed, such as in the investment areas, thereby providing the community with a range of housing options. And further on this, the plan goes on to recognize that the ordinances in place at that time might not jive with the plan. And with those, with respect to those ordinances, now it doesn't call them out specifically. It generally says, we need to update the ordinances to comply with, not to comply with the plan, but to reflect the plan in its own. So accordingly, the Board of Adjustment, counsel, as the Board of Adjustment, counsel's function is to reconsider the application according to review standards set forth at revised statute 30281182C and Trinidad municipal code 14-48C. But with an eye toward implementation of the goals of the plan. Remember, I said that the statute, CARO statute specifically gives the counsel, as our Board of Adjustment, leeway in applying statutes or the ordinances. So to help counsel fulfill the code's purpose and intent, CARO law specifically established that Board of Adjustment may reverse referring wholly or partly the modified order requirement, decision, or determination appealed from and shall make such order requirement, decision, or determination as in its opinion ought to be made in the premises to that and has all powers of the officer from whom the appeal is taken. It goes on. The counsel may vary or modify the application, regulations, or provisions of such ordinance relating to the use, construction, or alteration of buildings or structures, or the use of land, so that the spirit of the ordinance is observed, public safety and welfare secured, and substantial justice done. So let's dive into these specific points. So as I said, the evidence produced at the hearing was specifically in support. There really was no evidence produced in controversy. There was testimony in controversy, but none of it was evidence. The first person to testify against the application was Diane Santa Steven. She owns several lots in City View Heights. She identified herself in the hearing, if you go back and watch it, as the, where she said she's the owner of City View Heights. It's not true. She worked with the developer. And before he passed away, he owned several lots. So she owns several lots, which is not the developer. And she testified that lower roof pitch, roof pitch lower than a 612 lowers property values. But she offered no evidence in support of that. That's just her naked opinion based on, there was no, you know, based on nothing. There was no expert to come in and talk about how a lower roof pitch lowers property values. We're talking about surrounding property values, right? And so I submit to counsel that her testimony should be completely disregarded. She can make any sort of wild opinion she wants. Doesn't mean that it's actually true. There has to be something to base that opinion. She provided nothing. Mr. Larson, who I believe he owns 201 Omadaga, which is in the City of Heights neighborhood, knew about some of the lots that will be developed by my client. He testified that a couple of things he was concerned, 312, lowers property values as well. I submit for no specific opinion. There was no evidence put forth to support that either. It was just his naked opinion. He also testified that to grant one variance would lead to more, which I would say is sort of a non sequitur. Because the point of a planning and zoning variance commission is to, from time to time, grant variances. And if, if, if you, if a tribunal rests its opinion on the fact that more variances happen necessarily, then I submit that there's no point to having a variance commission. Because that's a doubt. Sometimes variances should be granted. Finally, he said he personally just wasn't happy about the idea of having houses with a 312 roof pitch. Which I would submit is not really a reason to deny the variance based on the review criteria, right? It didn't address any of them. None of these statements addressed any of the review criteria. So at the end of the day, what you're left with is the application, the staff report, testimony from my client. His wife was another member of the Southwest Development Group. And the testimony of Sky Tallman, all in favor of the variance being granted. On that basis alone, I submit that the variance should be granted. Number two, the commissioners failed to properly conduct its hearing. So this is not to throw shade on the commissioners. They have a tough job. But I think, you know, one of the things that the, it's sort of confused issues was that two of the commissioners were developers in previous years. So they had their own opinions on things. But number one, the commissioners summarily rejected the basis for the application. So the commissioners, if you watched the hearing or listened to the, read the testimony, the dialogue, is that they were very keen to avoid conferring a monetary benefit on anyone, right? Because the basis of the application was financial hardship, they saw it as, well, if we grant this variance, we're conferring a monetary benefit, which is not necessarily true. The financial hardship is just the basis for the application. They weren't handing somebody a bunch of money. They, you know, it wasn't a grant of money. There's no specific sum that they would be guaranteeing anybody. When you think about it, all variance applications, at the end of the day, in their very nature, essence, have a monetary tie, right? A piece of property, it can't build according to setback, right? Setback requirements. It therefore needs a variance in the setback requirements. If it gets denied, that's a cost, right? That's an expense. If you take the commissioners' viewpoint on it, well, if they granted that variance, they'd be. they'd be conferring a monetary benefit. Not really, right? All variances have a monetary base. They can all be valued, right? Some piece of property, if you can't get a variance, would be undevelopable. That is certainly a monetary effect, right? So, I submit that Council, or that the commissioners were wrong in their assessment of what they were really doing there with this application. Because of that error, they summarily rejected all of the evidence that supported my client's application. All of the evidence that the city planner reviewed and gave his recommendation to allow the variance. Frankly, they rejected all the evidence that had, of a type that had been used previously to grant variances. And in recent years, right, it's sort of seemed like this one, they decided, this is a monetary benefit we can't do. I submit they're wrong. It's not just a monetary benefit. And I would say, you might say, well, yeah, but what about the decrease in property values? You know, that's, I would say that if they denied the application because of decreasing property values, they actually took that opinion and made it evidence in their minds, right? That that's evidence. Decreased property values, I'm not going to do that to the other homeowners. I submit to you, at that point, they would be conferring a monetary benefit on somebody. Not the applicant, but unnamed third-party owners. They'd be using these zoning laws to protect the property values, the financial interest of other owners, which I would submit is improper basis. That would be conferring a monetary benefit, right? Monetary protection. So, the commissioners also improperly testified. As to the construction costs, there are challenging, my client's assertions, increased costs caused by a five twelve roof pitch versus a three twelve roof pitch. I would say five twelve versus three twelve, six twelve, five twelve, three twelve. This neighborhood in twenty seventeen received a variance, blanket variance, for a five twelve roof pitch. So, you've got the requirement, which is the coverage of six twelve, this neighborhood requirement, which is a five twelve, my client's looking for the three twelve. That makes sense. So, during the hearing, commissioners made statements concerning the effects of construction costs. They essentially brought to the hearing, as the tribunal, their own information, and proceeded to testify under that information, right? And then, use that in their deliberations. I would liken that to a judge showing up at trial and not basing his ruling on the evidence produced by the parties, but by challenging, say maybe a defense witness, or maybe the defendant himself, saying, well, I know that's not true, because I did, you know, I used to work in that industry, and I know, right? It's not fair to the defendant. It wouldn't be evidence. So, it's essentially kind of what they did. I understand why they did it, because they had been developers. It's natural. But it's improper to use in your deliberations. It's improper to challenge witnesses based on your own personal understanding of what things cost. Specifically, when that information was garnered years before. So, I would say it's an unreliable way, right? The third way they made error was that they completely ignored the review standards in their consideration. Essentially, they started out by summarily rejecting all the bases because of their misunderstanding of a monetary benefit. And rightly so, they were concerned about appearing to be impropriate by conferring benefit. But because of that, they rejected all of the bases of the application and proceeded to not review any of them, right? They just summarily rejected it, didn't go through the six bases, the six review criteria, I think I called them review standards in my memory. They didn't go through any of them. And I submit that that was a pretty big error, because that's the basis of, you know, what the applicant's supposed to satisfy. The question at the hearing is, did the applicant satisfy it? Not property values, not costs of construction, whether or not they agreed with the cost of construction, it's going to result in an eight thousand dollar increase per home, or anything like that. So, because of those three things, the hearing itself was not proper. And I believe my client, when he heard your shake, in terms of those thoughts. So, moving on. So, blanket six twelve roof pitch on all residential structures in City of Trinidad is in conflict with the purpose and intent, in my brief, or my, no, I shouldn't have capitalized.
You're giving us some redundancy in a lot of this, like, some kind of cut to the chase on some of this stuff, because you're giving it down.
Okay, well, I'll try. The, there is, so, in conflict, purpose, intent. Now, I went through some of this earlier, just to preface everything. Like I said, I'll cover a lot, a lot of that. So, I won't rehash the purpose and intent again, it's in my memory. But, so the requirement that all residential structures have a six twelve roof pitch, this is here regardless of zoning, is in direct opposition to fulfillment of the goals of the plan, and therefore is in opposition to the purpose and intent of section fourteen, right? Section fourteen being planning and zoning ordinances. So, section fourteen says, we need to fulfill the plan. The plan says, we need to encourage housing, right? Especially in full areas, which this is part of, the subject properties are part of. And we need to look at modifying existing ordinances to affect this point.
You've already stated that.
Yes, I did. So, when it was originally enacted in two thousand one, and this is, sixteen sixty, the requirement was limited to structures within E and G basic zoning areas. It was limited. And then sometime thereafter, the requirement was expanded to apply to all residential structures in the City of Trinidad, regardless of zoning classification. So, it necessarily constrains that the right of housing that may be constructed within the city, which is contrary to the plan. So, it's an active bar on construction of these residential structures. So, the next way, the six twelve roof pitch requirement for all residential structures in the city is in conflict with Colorado law, CRS thirty one twenty three, three oh one, five V I C. So, the statute states, no municipality may have or enact zoning regulations, subdivision regulations, or any other regulation affecting development that excludes, or have, that exclude, or have the effect of excluding homes from the municipality, and are homes that meet or exceed an equivalent performance in engineering basis standards established by the municipal building code. Trinidad has admitted, has enacted the International Residential Code with some minor adjustments in chapter eleven here, okay? So, it adopted this code, let's see. The building code does not exclude houses with a three twelve roof pitch, and actively establishes engineering standards for such roofs. The architectural requirement, fourteen sixty seven B one, necessarily excludes homes, in this case, homes with a three twelve roof pitch, from the municipality, regardless of engineering standard. Accordingly, the ordinance requiring six twelve roof pitch, really, should be disregarded. Shouldn't be enforced. The next way, the architectural standard requiring six twelve roof pitch for all residential structures is void, because it's not something the City of Trinidad has the power to command it. I know that's a bold statement.
Repeat that again, please.
It is not something, a six twelve roof pitch, I submit, is not something the city has the authority to mandate. And I'll tell you why. And I quote, this is Colorado statute, "For the purpose of promoting health, safety, morals, and general welfare," right? It's a purpose. It's not saying that you can do anything you want. Saying this is for the purpose, this is the reason we're granting cities this power. The governing body of each municipality has the power to regulate and restrict. We've got to use a list. The height, number of stories, size of buildings and other structures, the percentage of the lot that may be occupied, the size of yards, courts, and other open spaces, the density of population, the height and location of trees and other vegetation, and the location and use of buildings, structures, and other land for trade, industry, residence, or other purposes. These are things that are traditionally considered zoning. It does not talk about architectural requirements. The historic district notwithstanding. I understand that's a specific district of the statute. City has separate power to respect to that. These subject properties are not within the historic district, okay? So, none of these areas of regulatory authority allow the regulation of the residential roof pitch, a construction standard. As I submitted, the building code may, it's an open question, but it might, but it's not in the building code. It's in zoning code, specifically in the heading of architectural standards. So, the ordinance fails its valid use of the city's power to impose zoning regulations on the property within its purview. It doesn't have the ability to regulate the construction of buildings. So, for that reason, variance application should be granted. So, the final reason is that there is precedent for the granting of variance to allow a roof pitch lower than a six twelve. And many of those variances were granted due to financial hardship that a six twelve roof pitch would impose. So, generally, the, the, we get the five twelve roof pitch, and then on December seventh of twenty seventeen, the commission approved variance application for the developer who owned it, City of Heights, which was Orchard Square, plus, to allow a five twelve roof pitch on twenty, twenty of their lots out there. And the basis for the requested variance was the same as in present matter, that, quote the petitioner, will not be able to economically construct homes on the remaining fifteen and nineteen lots. So, that's from the staff report, which I see came from the actual application at twenty seventeen, P A R, twenty six. So, notably, two of the commissioners who voted in favor granting the variance are commissioners who denied this application for variance, specifically Mr. Leoni and Mr. Mataram. They were present on the board that granted a variance for the purpose being financial hardship. So, quickly, a couple of other variances that have been granted. Twenty eighteen, one was granted to a twelve fifteen Stonewall, it's a three twelve roof pitch. There's another twenty six twenty feet of the Nosa.
I think those properties that you're talking about, I think are irrelevant, because you're talking about a specific piece of property. These areas, these items outside that you're talking about are irrelevant, is that discussion irrelevant?
I would, I, you know, and I hear what you're saying, I do. But I do think that they are relevant in the fact that if this were a restricted ordinance, restricted to a certain area, restricted to a certain type of zone, that might, that might make more sense to me. The fact that this ordinance applies blanket across Trinidad, the City of Trinidad, like all structures, no matter where they're built, residential structures, require a city permit, have to have a six twelve roof pitch. And if they can't make a six twelve, they got to come before the zoning permission. So, I think, in that respect, it's only fair to look at all the homes in Trinidad. If you are lumped in with every single residence in Trinidad, why restrict your review of similar variances to just the area? But, you can look at my list. But the city did do, through the common's office, they did conduct an audit of the homes in City of Heights. I believe there were forty eight residences. And what the audit found, and I think that's part of his staff report, there's an exhibit, I think it's attached on D, six twelve. There were six residences with a four twelve roof pitch, two residences with a three twelve roof pitch, two residences with a four point five twelve roof pitch, and thirty one residences with a five twelve roof pitch. Send, and let's say that doesn't keep forty eight, seven of the residences accounted for roof pitches within the six twelve, right? So, I didn't include those. So, but essentially, eight of the forty eight residences, or sixteen point six seven percent of the residences in City View Heights, have a roof pitch below five twelve. So, it can't be really said that a three twelve roof pitch could change the character of the neighborhood. And I would submit to you that when the character of the neighborhood is mentioned, I don't believe it is meant to address visual outline of a building. I think character is more general. So, what that would do is, if it's, well, it's all these houses are five twelve, and this one was to be a three twelve, that would put the commission, and then eventually the Council, in a position of being neighborhood designers, you know, which is extremely arbitrary, right? This just depends on how you feel, whether I think that one kind of matches, and that one kind of doesn't, maybe this matches, maybe that doesn't. That's not something that a builder, developer, someone building their own home can really rely on. It's a, it's an undefined standard, right? So, yeah, so it's basically, you guys, you guys get put in a position of judging the aesthetic similarity of homes. But even if that were the case, I'd say sixteen point six seven percent of homes not needing the five twelve roof pitch, being less than that, is certainly enough to justify, you know, to not base a denial on. Especially, I think that's true, in areas where, you know, many, many, many of the lots are undeveloped, right? Because that standard could change depending on what the first houses start looking like, and the people that come later, right? So, if you start judging on the aesthetics, right, the guy who has his house first, well, he's got an easier time of it before the commission, because he's got nobody to compare to. And the guy that comes later in time, harder and harder and harder and harder and harder. I submit that's not fair to a law. You need standard, you're going to have a standard, have a standard, right? Not, well, it's not going to be, it doesn't fit the neighborhood. That would serve to keep out affordable housing on an arbitrary basis. So, with that, I would say that I believe, I truly sincerely believe that the application should be granted. These are five homes, they're IRC homes. These aren't cheap, factory-built homes, they're IRC compliant. They just happen to have a three twelve roof pitch. Making them go to five twelve is a, increase Making them go to five twelve is an increased cost of the strong people, as a, because maybe there's no price jump for a steeper pitched roof. And I think at the end of the day, generally, such a requirement essentially restricts the availability of housing, especially in various neighborhoods in the city of Trinidad, because this is a blanket ordinance that applies all of the city, no matter what neighborhood you're in. With that, I'll take questions.
Do you want to address that Colorado conflict, the statute?
Mayor, I, if you have questions on Mr. Land, I would ask you to please, if I could, please, I would suggest, I would like to make argument in a response to the argument that he just made.
Okay.
Okay? I would like to make a statement if I could, please.
Do you want to do that now, or?
If I could do it now, if that's okay? Mr. Land will be here to take questions?
Yeah, unless you want to ask questions first, or however you want.
Right, okay. So you can sit down, if you will come back up if they do have any questions. Thank you, sir. So council members, to begin, I would ask you to please consider the criteria that the planning and zoning commission was considering when they considered this ordinance. And by the way, I don't leave my mask on, I've recently been ill, as you know, and I'm in close proximity to all of you, fantastic idea, but I don't want to do that. But there are the six criteria for a variance request that the planning and zoning commission had to consider. Number one is, there are unique physical circumstances or conditions peculiar to the affected property. I respectfully submit to you that nobody, either Mr. Argüeta in his letter beginning this appeal, or Mr. Land, has really answered that question, or spoken to that problem on how this is necessary because there are physical circumstances or conditions peculiar to this property. There's been no discussion about that whatsoever. So problem number one, just, there has been no evidence about why this variance would need to be granted because there are unique physical circumstances or conditions peculiar to the affected property. Number two, the property will not continue to yield a reasonable return in use without the variances, also fails. No one is keeping them from building, no one's keeping them from doing anything. We are saying you simply must build with a six twelve roof pitch, as is required throughout the city of Trinidad, as Mr. Land mentioned on a number of occasions. So that, two, fails. Three, the physical circumstances of the property do not exist throughout the neighborhood. There's been nothing to show that there is a unique physical condition for these five lots, problem number one. And that these physical circumstances are unique to these five lots. No showing, no evidence, no argument or anything with respect to problem number three. The first three problems, I think there's been nothing regarding those in support of this ordinance. The property cannot be reasonably used according to the existing regulations, also fails. You have to build to that roof pitch. Might it add an expense to your building? Yes. But I don't think it's correct to say the property cannot be reasonably used according to the existing regulations, and there has been really no showing with respect to that. The variances, if granted, would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. It would. Now, there are forty eight lots, that list that Mr. Tallman referred to, excuse me, that Mr. Land referred to, that evidently Mr. Tallman compiled, there, I counted one three twelve roof pitch of the forty eight. I didn't see two. I counted one. And that, I believe, was grandfathered in, but I don't want to get too far afield. So allowing someone to go from the six twelve requirements to the three twelve would alter the essential character of the neighborhood, because he would now have five houses, he would go from one to six, that would have a three twelve roof pitch. I respectfully submit that that would alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The variance request, problem number six, the variance requests are the minimum variance that would afford relief. Well, that also is not the case, because if the rule is a six twelve roof pitch, if you came in asking for a five twelve, that would be the minimum that would afford relief, not asking to take five lots and deviate all the way down to a three twelve roof pitch. Now, to the statutory concern, and Mr. Land has cited the statute and he's quoted from it, and Mr. Argüeta mentioned the statute also, 3123 301, and there are the various sub-paragraphs, but that is in the provision of the statutory code that is regarding municipal government and a grant of powers, and it is regarding zoning. And it does say, and Mr. Land said this, but I'm gonna use his own argument against him, that, this is how the statute begins, "For the purpose of promoting health, safety, morals, or the general welfare of the community, including energy conservation and the promotion of solar energy utilization, the governing body of each municipality is empowered to regulate and restrict the height, number of stories, and size of buildings and other structures, the percentage of lot that may be occupied, the size of yards, courts, and other open spaces, the density of population, the height and location of trees and other vegetation." So that doesn't say in that statute that the governing body may enact regulations regarding roof pitch, but there's nothing in there keeping a governing body from making regulations about roof pitch. And one argument, somewhat parenthetically, and that is, if someone wanted to come to the city and say, "I don't like the rule regarding six twelve roof pitches, I don't like it," then challenge it, or ask for a policy change. It's kind of going the wrong way. And coming before planning and zoning and saying, "I have this proposal, I want to do this, and I think that the ordinance is unfair, therefore give me a variance, not on one lot, but on five, and not something that goes from six twelves to five twelves, no, I want to deviate all the way down to three twelves." There's a way to go about asking for an ordinance change and not saying that, "We had a hearing, it was really fundamentally fair, but we don't like the outcome, and therefore we want you to give us the variance that planning and zoning didn't give us." So I also want to say that further on in this statute, this is Roman numeral three, further down, nothing in this subsection five, "Shall preclude any municipality from enacting municipal building code provisions for unique public safety requirements, such as snow load, roof, wind shear, and energy conservation factors." So kind of touch it on that. And it's saying that it's okay, and this is the statute that has been widely quoted. And what has been mentioned is a provision that says you should not exclude housing if it otherwise meets engineering standards. So I understand that, but there is nothing that is saying that you are trying to preclude housing otherwise, or as a blanket policy that you were trying to preclude some kind of housing that otherwise meets engineering standards. And I'm about done, but I do want to say, there's an ironic twist in Mr. Argüeta's letter that was submitted as part of this, again, that initiated the appeal. And that is, he said that if you force them to do this, and you make them adhere to the existing ordinance, that it's gonna add eight thousand dollars to the cost of each home.
Was it eight thousand or thirty thousand?
I, well, it was eight thou, no, that's my point. So he says in his letter that it would be eight thousand dollars to comply with this. But he then says later on in another paragraph, I think it's paragraph number three B, I may have that wrong, but he says later in his letter that he's talking about the value of the homes, and he says, it's paragraph three D, and he says, "On the other hand, what will increase the value of these homes is over thirty thousand dollars in upgrades and design features that Southwest Development Group is adding to each home. Some of these upgrades include kitchen appliances, flooring, ceiling fans, driveways fencing, master bedroom windows, six panel doors, decorative external shutters, and more." So the eight thousand dollars in asking everyone to comply with our code, that's prohibitive, and that's really a bummer, but we have no reservation or compunction about doing these upgrades that are gonna ramp up the cost of each of these homes by thirty thousand dollars. It's ironic, and it's a paradox, and it doesn't make sense. I'm about done, but there's something else I want to say, and that is, there are forty eight properties in this subdivision, I believe, that was my count. I think forty eight. The people who are there currently have largely complied with the regulations, and they have largely complied with the requirements. And I don't know every property, I don't know how the three twelve got in there, I don't know how four twelves got in there, I don't know how five twelves got in there. But this is always the problem, you have an old town, and you're trying to have a rule, right? Because ADA, my God, you've got missing sidewalks and bad sidewalks, it's hard to get in compliance. This, we have the six twelve roof pitch, and are there other properties in the town or in this area that don't have a six twelve? Yes, there are. However, there are a lot of them that have complied, and have done what we ask of them, and what is required of them. So it is unfair to say, okay, you did it, thanks a lot, but now we're gonna go back to, you know, we're gonna waive that requirement and let this developer come in with a three twelve roof pitch for five properties, and just because we're going to do it. I guess my last point, and I want you to be the last questions of Mr. Land or myself, but my last point is this, planning and zoning and all commissions, boards, city council, when you have a matter, your comments are not always, you know, just spot on, are going directly to what you should talk about. It's like watching sausage being made sometimes, right? The consideration of these things, but they didn't say anything that was inappropriate. They did not deprive this applicant of a fair and full hearing. They heard the testimony from the people that they needed to hear testimony from, and there was nothing that struck at the heart of not getting a full and fair hearing. And so for those reasons, I respectfully submit, planning and zoning did not err, they did not make a mistake, and for those reasons, I respectfully submit that the variance request, the variance requests should be denied.
And I follow comments, I'll turn over the rest to council. There were two words that Mr. Land referred to early on. One was, he said, "Council and state grants city council, in this particular case, leeway and harmony of the property." So it grants us the leeway to be able to say a three twelve, or five twelve, or six twelve, or whatever it is. He also mentioned about harmony. You have to remember that, if you're gonna have harmony in one area, in one house, you have five houses, and then there's two houses that aren't harmonious with the rest of them. So that's part of our job, to make sure that we're harmonious throughout a project. The other thing that was interesting is, he said it was not a redevelopment, or it was, that it was a redevelopment area. That is not a redevelopment area. To me, that is a developing area, because it's been under development for many, many, many years. The reason why I know is because I was working at the time, at my capacity at that time, when that entire project started back maybe many years ago, and I'm pretty well aware of that before we went on up there, in many ways. I'm gonna get into that. He also mentioned that other areas were talked about with hardship. And hardship, I don't understand what they mean by hardship. Is it economic hardship? To me, if it's economic hardship, then you shouldn't be building, period, okay? As far as the aesthetics, aesthetics of a building, you know, that's the front side, that's the face of it, that's not the top of the roof, or whatever. And as far as the roof pitch goes, the cost, the cost of the roof pitch, I'm pretty well aware of, because I did that for forty three years. And the cost, from when I was in business, saw that, was relatively minimal, I think you recommended eight thousand dollars. It may be somewhere, I think it's maybe somewhere lower than that, due to the increase of cost of materials today. Now, going from a three twelve to a five twelve is not that great. I know that for a fact of experience, because I used to do material payoffs, and I knew what the cost of all these things used to be. And that was about three, four years ago, but I recognize that there's been an increase And just all the things that he stated, it's almost like, why do we even have a comprehensive plan? Why do we even have ordinances? Why do we have, you know, it's like, all the things that he alluded to, to me, it sounded like, almost like, should we throw out the ordinance, should we throw out our comprehensive plan, should we throw out the building code? That's kind of what it sounded like to me. One thing I wanted to say is that, as far as some of the statutory requirements that he regarded this, and I may be wrong, and Mr. Downs may be able to correct me on this, but in many instances, home rule trumps substate statutes, in some cases. I'm not sure if it's one of the cases here or not, but we, as a home rule, that we can limit homes with variances of roof pitches, and whatever, you know, whatever we're talking about. Am I correct, or am I correct?
Well, I never want to be in violation of state statute, and I know there has been discussion about that, there have been, in certain areas, there were arguments that that can happen, but I would say, we don't violate state statute, and so that is the best answer I could give, is that we don't violate state statute.
And the last thing, and I mean, you want to call on somebody or not, because it just popped up, and it talked about, of course, it talks about the lowering of the value of the properties at one to three twelve pitch. I see that we have a Realtor listening in today, she may be able to give us an insight on, would that be something that we could do, or should we not?
Well, I think.
Because this is an open forum.
I understand, but we may, I mean, they should probably be sworn, I don't know if we're, I mean, I just won't be on testimony, or kind of, right? I don't know, I don't know if you want to take public comment, I think you can if you want to, Mayor.
I would hear both councils' questions.
Okay, I'm okay. Yeah, good point.
Okay. So I got what I was saying, so let's go to the council and start with.
Well, you know, personally, if I was the applicant, I would be concerned about compromising character and aesthetics to the residents of the forty eight houses in the neighborhood. That would be me. And I know you want to save money on all for development, I'd never question that, but even with a three twelve roof pitch, which is fourteen degrees, there's some inadequacies with proper drainage in flat spots where water would settle and puddles would form, and I don't know if that's relevant, I think it is. But why do we have a variance if we're not, if the city of Trinidad doesn't have the power to mandate anything? I, does everybody know? I, does everybody know?
Why can't we have that? I can submit it, but in my opinion, there are, under this one subsection, okay? This is actually under, it says, fourteen H sixty-seven says, for the purpose of promoting and preserving the character of the historic district, right? And then it goes on to restrict all the homes in Trinidad, right, to the seashore pitch. It's kind of like, we're going to talk about these homes. Now, we're going to go on to the vast majority of fourteen H sixty-seven is about the historic district, which I'm not saying the city council can't regulate various aesthetic qualities relating to that. That makes complete sense, and as I said earlier, I think historic districts are special in a way, okay? But there are only like three of these ordinances that have to do with the actual structural build of, like, beyond the site of the areas and the grant of the authority. So, one's roof pitch, the other one is having a door that faces the street, and there's another one. So, it's just, these are very sort of, especially in that area, because we're going to talk about preserving the character of the historic district, there's three things that relate to all residences in Trinidad. So, it's kind of an orphan child, really, structurally, architecturally.
So, is that eight thousand dollar amount per unit per lot, or is that a total of the five lots?
Right, per unit per lot.
Per lot?
Yes.
Okay, so if that applicant wants to upgrade thirty thousand dollars, so five lots times eight is forty thousand dollars, why can't the applicant upgrade twenty-two thousand and pay for the eight thousand dollar per lot variance?
No, because they have actual costs with respect to the upgrades. So, it's not, you know, they, the upgrades themselves, they can recoup cost on, right?
Right.
Those are typically things that you say, you want a sub-zero fridge, I'll get it for you, you're going to pay for it, plus a multiplier for my, you know, for my profit and expenses and things like that. But this is a, I believe it's in the application, it's something that they can say, oh, you know, we got a six twelve roof pitch, so, you know, that's going to cost a little bit extra. The difference being that with the upgrades, you can recoup those costs. So, if that answers your question.
Did that answer?
Yes.
I have another one, but I think I'll wait and listen.
No, go ahead.
Just-
Please let us know who your jury judge was.
I'm talking to Mr. Land. I don't know if you know this or not, but you did mention that your client built three homes prior to him trying to build these five homes, correct? What pitches are those? What roof pitch?
I, I think they're five twelve.
He's raising his hand for me.
The three homes are five twelve roof pitches because we had to go from a three twelve to a five twelve. This happened because once we bought the lots, which it was never disclosed by the title company, it should have been an ordinance that was filed, but it wasn't. The title company didn't tell us about this. So, we had to incur an additional expense to go from a three twelve to a five twelve on those three homes. And we thought, we will see if we can get a variance from a five twelve to a three twelve. This time around. The first time around, we had, we were forced because we had already ordered the homes, they were on the factory floor, and we were told, no, you've got to go from a three twelve to a five twelve. And that was midway. We had no clue about this until it was too late.
Yeah, they, when they order these homes, it takes, they have a design phase, and then they have to, it's a, they're about to start.
If I could, please, that was Mr. Arcueta from the audience for the record. I'm sorry, that may be a little weird on the record. And his answer was, the three houses were built to a five twelve roof pitch, KSEP wasn't picked up on the microphone. Thank you, sir.
You know, if other questions come, you ought to come up and maybe sit in the front What other questions you have?
Well, I went through that neighborhood several times, trying to figure out what was what on that development, and I'm just, the only thing that concerns me, and this isn't a question, I guess it's a statement, that I've seen snowlogs in this area become quite severe. Is there, does a three twelve pitch make the roof less susceptible to keeping in?
Well, I'm not an engineer. I'm not an engineer, but, and I, I'm willing to testify, but what I can say is that, under the law of Colorado, there's not a blanket requirement for three twelve, you know, a blanket prohibition against three twelve roof pitches. The International Residential Code has its own engineering standards, and Colorado has enacted a statute, which Mr. Downs and I disagree on its interpretation, but I believe says that, you know, none of these penalties shall enact an ordinance which has the effect of excluding otherwise I R C compliant homes, right? On an engineering basis, because that's really what you do, is just repair engineering to engineering, right? And so, in that respect, I would think the state of Colorado would be perfectly fine with three twelve pitch. And there are, there are places in Trinidad which receive way more than we do.
But I would like to say, if I could, please counsel a little bit, that question goes to really the rationale of why you have a six twelve roof pitch ordinance, and that's really not, I mean, the question as to why we have it is kind of, you know, a ship that is sail, right? We have it, it's legal, the reasons and rationale, I'm not entirely certain, does that make sense?
I'm just trying to clarify-
I understand.
-why the, why his client went from five twelve to three-
I understand.
I noticed the footers that are ready for those three homes. Did the, did your client put those in prior to applying for a variance? What was the chronological order?
I don't know.
So, will those footers still fit on five twelve?
I believe so, but the issue is that the cost comes in the engineering of the trusses.
Okay.
And the increased cost of the, so it's increased cost not only on the manufacture but also on the development.
I have no further questions.
No, I don't have any questions, but I'd like to make a statement. I mean, it's one of the reasons why we have a board of, you know, for zoning and planning, so I'm kind of in agreement with them, they, there's got to be a reason why they voted it down, and, you know, we go against it, I think it's kind of silly for us to have a board. And, I mean, I know there's occasions where you have to have a variance in that, and then you also made a statement that there's guys on the board that were contractors and that. Well, we try to get people that are qualified to understand what's going on because a lot of us aren't roofers and builders. But that's my opinion, I don't really have any questions, I just kind of think that we have a board, and that's why we have it, for them to direct what we need to have done.
My understanding of what our job is tonight is not to rehash everything, it's to look at whether, whether our planning and zoning commission made a correct decision based on the evidence that was in front of them, not what we're going to hear tonight, what each one of us might know or not know about the circumstances of that neighborhood. And so, I'm trying to focus in on what seems to me to be critical. And what seems to me to be critical is that, yes, we have a six twelve universal standard that is in the city. Yes, evidence was presented that that's been granted variances numerous times, and generally the reasoning for that variance was economic. It wasn't some other reason, it was because they ordered the house and it had that roof and they didn't know or whatever, it's all economic. And if I understand what happened, why there was a blanket variance given to this neighborhood weren't economic reasons, it's not because of the shapes of the lots or the circumstances that might have made building on those lots with a six twelve roof difficult. So, I'm trying to think through whether it's fair to, on the one hand, say that in one circumstance, economics should rule the situation or it should not. I'm curious whether or not, and I read through all of these things, and I noticed that you all, in your presentation, say that roof pitch doesn't affect property value. Did you present any evidence to the commission of that?
No, there wasn't, but the evidence in favor of it was just opinion, it does.
Okay. But it was also then just your client's opinion that it doesn't?
Well, my client is a place developer, so he has, he develops homes and sells them, so at least he has some expertise in that. You know, I would, I would submit that, you know, what you're talking about, opinion and evidence typically comes through an expert, right? They're not a firsthand witness, they're the only people that can testify typically that did not, don't have personal knowledge or events at hand. They're, what they do is they take evidence from other places, review it, and formulate an opinion. And the weight of that opinion is based on, number one, how we are kind of an expert in what they do, you know, and you prove that from prior experience and things like that. Number two, the strength of their opinion, right? So, yeah. I would say that when you shake it all out, right, the evidence that remains from the hearing was all in favor of granting variance.
I recognize too that our planning and zoning commission, most people are chosen on the basis of that they have some understanding of-
Please understand, I, my intent is to not disparage the commission, any of the members. I, you know, I think they have a tough job, and I'm sure, you know, they work very hard at it. But I think in this instance, there were some mistakes made that affected my client's rights.
And so, the only, the only evidence that they had in front of them then was the staff report that recommended approval, and what your client testified to them about. Was there anyone else there?
In the application. There was Mrs. Hannah Stephen, Mr. Tom Larson, they gave testimony.
And you've explained-
I summarized their testimony, of course, councils, of course, for you to go back and look at yourselves, but their testimonies are, I'm sure.
I think the thing that is giving me pause is that it does seem like the commission was speaking out of possibly personal bias, possibly personal prejudice about the situation, and that concerns me. If I were an applicant, I would want to know that my application was being dealt with on the terms that it was being presented and the evidence that was in front of them, and so that does give me a couple of pause. At the, at the commission, did your client present any evidence of economic hardship that he would suffer, he was forced to build to six twelve or five twelve? That's something I'm not all-
Now, the ordinance itself is six twelve, so that's essentially what he's seeking a variance from, right? Because he can't seek a variance from a variance. So, the standard is six twelve. Now, the lots out there operate under standings or blanket five twelve variance grant, but in order to seek a variance for his specific issue, he had to seek it against the six twelve.
But he could have, he would have, or is it your position, he would have been entitled to a five twelve?
Yes.
How about a four twelve?
No, not without another variance on the council, if our commission has. I would, I would address your first part where you said, you know, did they make the correct decision, basically evidence before them, and I think that's correct, and I would agree. But you have to understand, with the way the statute reads, is that the Board of Adjustment, right, because the statute calls it the Board of Adjustment, which you are in sign yes, it gives the Board of Adjustment wide latitude, right, to determine and vary an ordinance application, and this goes to what Mr. Rico was saying, in harmony with its general purpose and intent, right? Its referred back to the ordinance, right? So, the ordinance is general purpose and intent, you go back to the beginning of section fourteen, spells it out right there, comprehensive plan. Read the comprehensive plan, variety of housing, right? All sorts of price points. And especially in what are, and I might have misspoke, it's a reinvestment area, so there were areas in which have been developed, sort of framed out development, sewer, you know, turbine gutter, power, all that stuff, but haven't, haven't been built. The testimony, I believe, in the hearing was, the lots out in the city heights, you know, haven't been built out there in twenty years. There are a lot of edge lots, so.
What was your argument, or what was his argument to the commission about the character of the neighborhood and how having three twelve roofs would affect that?
I think that's where the audit came in. So, it not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and I, and so, this is kind of an interesting point. So, that's, that comes from, you know, the essential character of the neighborhood. I think when you think about that, it's important not to think in terms of class, right? Not like, well, that house, that's a way to keep people out, which I would submit is not a proper use of zoning. Zoning is, look, this is residential, you need to have your, your building, your house set back a certain amount from the street because we don't want people driving through your front door, right? Or you want to have sidewalks where people can be able to, general welfare, to be able to walk from place to place out of the street, things like that, right? Not, well, that house doesn't match this house, you know? It's all wrapped up in this sort of design structural issues, which again, I submit is not a proper area for zoning, because what they essentially are, are structural restrictions, which are more properly imposed by a developer through their restrictive covenants, right? You see these all the time in restrictive covenants. Restrictive covenants are what a developer records at the court, you know, in the county records, saying, you know, these are the uses you can make of your lots, typically sort of family residential, right? And these are the things, so those are use restrictions, then they talk about structural restrictions. Your paint choice has to be one of the five paint colors on this swatch, and, you know, you have to have, like, where I'm from, a lot of the areas, we have this limestone, so we want, you know, at least seventy-five percent of the house size, it ought to be limestone, you know, not just, you know, hardy paint, and things like that, these sort of, right? It's not really something that the city should impose on everybody. I mean, by this standard, the city could start imposing, well, we want our entire city to be blue. All new homes need to be blue, why not? Right?
I've looked in New Orleans and they do stuff like that.
Well, maybe, Louisiana's a little different.
They will make sure your shutters and everything's managed, they will do an aesthetic historical-
Right, but see, but that's the, that's the key, it's a historical issue. It's, and those, they typically, what they'll do is they'll have historic districts that give, that in order to preserve that historic district, you can't regulate the look, right? The aesthetic look specifically.
I'm sorry, I think the answer is getting far off from the question, and the problem of variance, I'm sorry.
I see my-
Typically, yeah, no, typically to promote this, the historic purpose, yes.
How long have you been a developer?
I've been building homes in Colorado since the seventies. I built, first I built homes in Vail, then I went, that was in the seventies and the eighties, I built homes in Aspen. And to address the cost of the roofs, it's going to depend on the length of the roof as to how much it goes up, but on a fifty-foot roof, which I can have the president and owner of premium living- and owner of premium living testify to that, and who I have built homes with for over the last forty years, not just in Vail, Aspen, but also in the Denver area. I owned a real estate brokerage and a mortgage company. I'm very well versed in this business.
Let me ask you this, so, so the thirteen, sixteen swing, um, is that a mistake on your part or on the home builder? Since you've been in the business this long, uh-
The what swing?
From having a sixteen pitch, six twelve, I mean six-
A six twelve.
It sounds like you've been doing this for a long time, is this like, how did we get to, um, three tw- what's it?
Okay, the, a, a premium living or any IRC builder builds a seven twelve, five twelve, and a three twelve. They do not build a six twelve. That's why I requested the six twelve go to a five twelve.
Yeah. But- I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, sir.
Go ahead.
That's why they, they build those three pitches, okay? So the six twelve pitch doesn't work for any factory-built IRC home, okay? Uh, and as far as your question, whether we were asked about financial hardship, anytime that was brought up, we were told to shut up, that that was not allowed to be tabled.
Yeah, I would, I would echo that because the, the board was, the commission was, was so concerned about transferring financial data.
And they, and they do build a five twelve?
They build a seven twelve, five twelve, and a three twelve. But the five twelve, like I said, not only increases the cost, but also requires a hinged roof because when it's traveling down the road, you-
So a three twelve is financially the bottom of the, the cheapest version of the house.
It's not cheap. It's not cheap in any manner.
It's expensive, but it's expensive than the six twelve. It's, it's almost like-
It's, on a fifty-foot linear roof, it's an eight thousand dollar difference from a three twelve to a five twelve.
Outside of that, it sounds like somebody chose to go the less extensive route versus-
Well, no, no, we chose to go with what the state of Colorado allows, and because the ordinance was never filed or registered anywhere, the title company couldn't figure it out, and no one could figure it out, and it wasn't until we were already halfway through these three first homes that we had to switch from a three twelve to a five twelve and incur an additional expense, which was unfair, and, and it just-
On that end, on that end with the, with the, between you and the bill, that's what I'm, so you're in a variance to fix some mistakes somewhere.
Correct.
Um, Mayor, I, uh, have, I have several questions. Um, Mr. Downs, I want clarification, and I'm, I'm-
It's a nice, I guess, it, uh, it, it strikes me, it was a really great idea to run the city council.
I mean, this is probably because of the situation right now. I've looked several times, I want clarification specifically on voting, a yes or no vote indicate what? If we vote yes, we're upholding the variance, or we vote, I'm sorry, the, the-
When I bring you the question, I'll clarify that.
Okay, go ahead. Uh, that being said, I have a question. You said a, a fifty foot, the company said fifty foot, linear fifty foot of roof would increase it by eight thousand fifty dollars?
Correct. Lance McHugh, the owner of Premium Living, who I've done business with, like I said, for over thirty years now, is willing to testify to that.
So these houses though, these houses are not fifty feet long, I assume the-
Yeah, no, the, the roof pitch is fifty foot long.
Okay.
They're actually twenty, twenty-eight by fifty, twelve thousand plus square feet.
Okay. Um, I, I have a question about, uh, the three twelve roof pitch. Um, in, in my experience, uh, and this, this proved true, uh, when I toured that neighborhood a couple of times, when you have a three twelve roof pitch, uh, the use of the home are, are either very small or non-existent, is, is that, is that the case?
What do you mean the?
Overhang. The overhang.
No, it's, it's not, it's, looks like the normal roof. I mean, there have been studies done on this, and Lance McHugh can testify to this, uh, as far as the aesthetics and perception of a three twelve versus a five twelve. And people do not see that. When they look at a home, they don't look at a roof pitch, they look at the color of the house, shutters, interior, what's, you know?
Um, uh, I mean, as an observation, um, I do, I do think that the, um, variance, uh, procedure is working. There's, there's homes that have been built, uh, under the five twelve, um, so, I mean, we're, uh, I guess, trying to determine if, um, it should be, it should be granted, uh, you know, in, with, with the whole, whole suit once. Um, I have, I have no further questions.
I would, I would, and I, I would like to respond to that final point, and I believe, um, council, you had-
I, I didn't know what IRC was.
Oh, okay.
I googled it.
I think, well, when somebody else had the same, um, comment, that there, other people there had done it, um, had, had done the five twelve, they'd done the five twelve, which is true.
Yeah, they had, they had called for, I think it's international or something called-
Yeah.
Yeah, no, 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 I've, I've, that's International Residential Code.
Yeah.
Um, but the, but the, but the issue of, the comment that, that had been made, I think echoed, that other people out there, you know, forty, thirty-one residences in the forty-eight had, uh, done a five cough, right? Um, roof pitch. But I would submit that that, that's not necessarily the basis in which this should be considered because they just built their homes. They might have wanted a lower roof pitch, but they didn't come ask for a lower roof pitch, right? Um, they just went and built them. And so it's kind of like, it's not that they were, you know, you, you can't just assume that they were, this is, you know, onerous or whatever. They, they didn't ask, you know? I think they're asking. So that's the difference right there. Um, if they had asked and been denied, well, then I think they could step up and say, hey, and then, and then garner the, the, you know, the authority to say, I live with it, why can't you, right? Been harassed to my lodge.
Okay, I've got a couple of, before we move forward with this. You know, that five twelve pitch, I, I believe, that has set a precedent after. The single or two rooms that are, uh, two, three twelve or whatever, uh, that was done way before the comprehensive plan was, you know, put into place. Till his own admittance, regardless of the circumstance of why he was supposedly forced into going with a five twelve pitch, that, to me, that's here or there. Um, as far as when, as an end user, and you go up to a home, and you look at a home, sure you look at the color, you look at maybe the, some of the other aesthetics that it has. But the roof is an aesthetic part of a building. Let's face it, it is. And if you're trying to establish, do I want to live in an area that's a little more aesthetic appealing? If the cost is not that much difference, what are you going to do? So I think it's, it's up to, it's the end user that makes that determination. Um, and like I said, it, it goes back to, like I said, question that you said earlier, or the thing that you brought up, is that it grants us the leeway to the direction that we want to go with this. And also the harmony that I, that he also mentioned, is if you're going to have, what's going to be the next question that's going to come up? Are they, is somebody going to come in with a four twelve pitch? Or more three twelve pitches, and now you're going to have a river of roof pitches, which years ago they used to do. I think there are various parts of the town, and you can see those all across the country. But if you look at an area, they're all trying to establish some guiding factor. So is everything looks at least a little bit similar? And I think that's what makes the appeal of an area more than others. It's just like, if you go buy a car, and you buy a car, and you look at a, a car that doesn't have any dents, and you see cars that don't even have dents, and which one do you buy? Let's say the house is a little dense, but I'm just saying, it's just, it's just the, the visual factor, the, the visual factor plays a big part in this. I don't see where the P and Z aired. You know, they do have opinions like us, we have opinions that you're listening to right now. Some of us have experience, extensive experience, some of us may not. Uh, and like you mentioned earlier, we try to get people on some of these boards, these very fine boards and commissions, that have some experience and background. Because if we did not, we'd be in a world of hurt because then they wouldn't know where to start. It's good, it's good to try to have somebody that has some sort of background in, in this particular case-
And I would, I'd agree that-
Building code. Um, you know, I, I, there was a, so you mentioned that there was, that staff had recommended approval. I don't know if that was something they should have done, I, I don't really know, that's, that's, you know, here or there at this point. Um, but I think we brought it to a limit, though. Was there anything brought forward to show that there was any, if they were hurt in any way by not, you know, going forward with the three twelve, and by not going forward with the three twelve pitch?
Well, it's all, it's all the application.
Right.
And I didn't, I didn't go through the application because council can read it. It's, 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 it's addressed.
So really, what it boils down to in my hearing tonight, there's actually some stuff here that we don't have answers to. And what I'm seeing, I, I'm hearing that there's, there's, there's no concrete evidence in, in, on, on both sides. So I, I just, uh, there's, that, that, that's what I'm seeing. So there, there, there are some holes involved in this.
Well, I would like to address a couple of your questions, and I realize it's getting late, um, but I, I do, if, if you're finished.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, um, I know we talked about the aesthetics, and something occurred to me, and I was like, well, what's it going to look like in the neighborhood if, um, you know, three twelve show up next to the stop and falls? Um, I understand that point, but let's look at it from the opposite angle. I'm sure there are neighborhoods in Trinidad that have a lot of sub-five twelve roof pitches in the neighborhood, right? Because this ordinance applies citywide, if someone were to erect a new home there, or I think even if they had to repair their roof, um, and the cost to do so was a certain amount, they would have to build a new roof in compliance with this, with the code. They couldn't just repair, right? So if they would be forced to do a six twelve, what about those people? Couldn't they then say, well, this changes the look of my neighborhood, right? So when you look at it that way, the answer's yes, right? So what you're really talking about is, we don't like the look of that three twelve. It's really, it's not, you know, we, 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 we've, we've made our own determination that, uh, that the six twelve is superior aesthetic, right? Because those people in neighborhoods that have majority three twelve, majority four twelve, and you put the six twelve, it's going to stay out like a sore thumb.
What I'm looking at here is-
But I'm looking at your aesthetics there.
What I'm looking at here is precedence.
I just, if I could, and I'm sorry, Mr. White, I don't mean to interrupt, but I just don't think we can impugn anyone's motives. The rule is the rule, the six twelve roof pitch. I, I don't know why, but I don't think, I mean, we are not trying to be exclusionary. When I say we, I mean the city. And I, I just, it, it's a question of whether or not they, they appropriately enforced and followed the existing rule. And with that being said, I'm sorry, Mr. White.
No, and the only thing I would say to that is that, I mean, it is a, I said, well, it's clear. Um, but it, it, I'm not saying that there was an intent to be exclusionary, I'm saying the fact is exclusionary. So, you know, effects happen with good intentions, right? So, um, I, I did, I would, I wanted to, um, Mr. DiBono, you had said something, I'm sorry.
I have one more question, right? Yeah.
I, I just, I wanted to address your, um, one of your issues. You said there was a, you had concerns, whether there was inadequacies regarding to drainage, right?
Yes, uneven black spots.
Right. I don't, I'm not an engineer, again, um, so that, that, that may be a valid concern. Um, what I would say to that, though, and what I do say to that is, that's something that should be more properly addressed by the building code, right? This is a zoning issue, which, again-
But doesn't that still apply to a three twelve roof pitch?
Maybe, but it's not barred by the zone, by the building code, right? This, this ordinance had to do with zoning, it's under the zoning portion of the, part of the building code, you know, two separate things, right? Zoning talks about, is concerned with those areas of regulation, which, but we highlighted in the statute under the grand-
With the three twelve, you're still creating those issues, though.
Maybe, and that might, and that might be something that-
I think we're getting into the weeds on this, so I think let's play-
Yeah, that, that, that-
We need to put this to rest.
Okay. Well, I would say that that might be something that would be taken care of in, in maybe an application or something like that, with respect to the, the building, um, commission.
Okay, with that, the hearing is now closed, so we have to bring the question. I'm going to read the appeal.
Okay, question in the notice, it said that public comment would be, um, interested person shall be afforded the opportunity to comment and testify.
That's what I, and I know Mr. Downs was saying that.
Do we need to?
Well, I think we should, since it does-
And that's what I'm talking about.
I'm sorry, I think that's absurd.
So before we close the hearing, sorry about that, but you're right. Uh, is there anyone in the audience to speak for or against this appeal? Please go forward. Would you like to take your name?
My name is Tom Larson, I live on two oh one on Adaga. I got accused tonight of non-sequiturs, and here's the king of non-sequiturs, that strong man arguments.
No, no point, just direct the question, just please.
Anyways, uh, well, I was here at the first meeting two weeks ago or so, and Francisco, and, and let me say that I appreciate what Francisco's doing. I mean, I, I appreciate him filling in the holes, the unsightly holes in our neighborhood that were, it was kind of annoying, and I appreciate him for building homes. I just hope he builds them, uh, thousand square feet or more, per the covenants, which I have here on my phone, if you want to see them. And, uh, the homes in this area go for over two hundred thousand dollars, you have two hundred and twenty to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And in Francisco's own words, he could save eight thousand dollars per house, and you were correct, it was eight thousand, I heard it, I was here that night. And, um, he said that that would make more people qualify possibly. Well, I'm thinking, uh, two hundred and twenty thousand dollar houses, I don't see where that's going to make a, a, a big difference in whether somebody qualifies, I mean, that's kind of ridiculous. And, um, also, my neighbor, Ernie Barella, you know, he, he's worked for the city for a long time, he's dead set against, uh, uh, granting a lower roof pitch.
Where's that second hand, that speculative?
Yeah, I know, it's second hand, but, uh, I, you know, I know, it's, it's, yeah, it's irrelevant, I, I understand that, and I've had people, I've been in contact with some of my neighbors, and that roof pitch will look like, make us look like mobile homes, you know, really look out of place. So anyways, it, it, logic would tell you that if my, my house is worth, say, two twenty thousand, and this house, and that house, and that house over there are eight thousand or ten thousand dollars less, wouldn't that by inference lower the value of my house? I'm just wondering here. I'm, I'm thinking that if this house goes for eight thousand, my house is obviously going to be shot- my house is obviously going to be chopped, chopped off at the knees as far as valuation goes. Um, he, they brought no proof as to whether, uh, lowering the roof pitch would, uh, I mean, he, he didn't prove his point that, uh, it would not affect the valuation of the houses in our neighborhood. He brought no proof. Of course, I didn't either, but I'm just going by logic. If it lowers value by 8,000, obviously it's going to lower my, my house values. Now, this might be irrelevant to you folks, but it's highly relevant to me. It means a lot to me and my neighbors that have been in contact with, who couldn't be here tonight. So that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Wong. Anyone else that would like to speak?
Gina Ray.
We've got somebody with... Gina? That's Gina Ray.
Yes.
Gina, would you like to make a comment?
Uh, yes, I would. First of all, I did write a letter tonight. Did the counsel receive it?
No, I did not. We did not get it.
I didn't submit it because I wasn't aware we were going to be presenting evidence, but I'm happy to submit it.
Well, I have a comment on it. Um, Gina, I want to give an opinion either way of, of support for the 312, but I am going to say that, um, in regards to value, I was asked my opinion on that. And my comment to Southwest Development Group, who I've worked for, as well as Porky Development, you know that I also do a lot of high-end developments with strict covenants. But at any rate, back in the day, I can see where Moderno Homes considered their homes, you know, 512 pitches, you know, cute little hut homes. They had financing packages for buyers. And in that time period, that was financially feasible. And they were also lower priced homes than what the IRC code homes are, that these homes are. Um, I also want to state that there's not really, in speaking to the master appraisers, including Albert Hill, who, who said there is absolutely no value criteria in the appraisal process for roof pitch, none. So for anybody to say here tonight that roof pitch adds a value criteria to an appraisal is very incorrect. So I do want to correct you on that. On the second thing is, I want to say, uh, third thing is, that City View Heights has had half the lots empty for 20 years. And any developer you talk to is going to say that this is the reason why. Because we're trying to do, uh, limit something in the neighborhood that's a medium housing criteria. So it, it's, it's beyond me that it gets so much attention when it comes to roof pitch. And I also want to say that let people build there, because Diane San Stevens has owned lots there for years that she can't sell because no one can afford to build there. That's the evidence. Uh, what kind of taxes are people paying on their vacant lots? Is that benefiting the city? Is that benefiting people? And that's not true, Tom. I love Tom Larson, by the way. He's a great guy and he's a smart guy. But on the other hand, when he was purchasing homes, homes were $120,000. They're not $120,000 today. And to qualify somebody for FHA or USDA or that typical buyer in that development, you are not going to be able to do that. So every dollar counts. And I do believe the buyer is going to be the ultimate decision maker on whether a house is good enough to take out a mortgage. And on a mortgage like that, they're going to want some upgrades inside their home and their yard. I don't think a roof is going to be a priority. So I just wanted to add those additional comments.
Ms. Ray, I would like to ask a question.
Sure.
I'd like to ask a question, Ms. Ray.
I, I think public comment, I think just public comment at this time. Very good. You crossed, we haven't seen somebody.
Okay, I was, uh, well, I just wanted to establish her, her, um, her...
I think we're past, I think we're past that already, and I think we have someone else that wanted to comment.
I think two people, there's a little bit of the audience, I think maybe 20 and 30.
So, is Diane going first or?
Oh, why don't we listen to you first? You know, we can bring Diane. Thank you, name please?
My name is Mrs. Harrows, and I live at 322 Camille Street. I have a house on the development for Diane San Stevens. And I agree with Tom. As far as the property value, I'm no expert at it, but if you go get a loan or even Google, I know you're supposed to Google, first thing they look at is what your house's worth around your property. And, uh, you know, as far as the house going down, I believe it would. Because, okay, I, I'm not sure how much the house is worth, and I haven't really researched a lot of this. I didn't even know this was going on because I had personal problems in the center, so I couldn't attend any of these meetings. But, um, oh, and I have one question. Okay, they're saying about the 512s, 312s, 412s. It is my understanding that you won't know the roof pitch unless you go measure the roof. Is that correct? I'm, I'm not an expert, but...
It's really hard to tell, to me.
Right.
Most laymen, if you do a 312 or a 512, they're not going to know.
So how do we know that there's 3, 312s there?
You can tell the difference.
You can, okay.
I believe the, the audit from, from...
The city did an audit.
The city planner's audit.
Okay, see, I wasn't sure about that. So, uh, that was my concern more about the property value and, and as far, um, well, as far as Diane's property right there, and I might be wrong. She is online, isn't she?
Yeah, we'll let her speak.
Okay. I know there's been a few, if you look at Diane's property, there's not one house that isn't built with, uh, out of garage. And that was more or less her requirement, and I believe that's what she's asking for. So when you add the garage, it costs a little more. Because she was trying, I believe, well, back then, but 20 years ago, make it uniform. And I think she's still trying to do that. And I might be wrong. But that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Diane, you're up next, please.
Good evening, and I am truly sorry that I am not there in person. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
I am at Homeless Medical Problem. So I'm unable to be there. But I am Diane San Stevens, and I am the owner of City View Heights Development. And before I begin, counsel, I would just like to share some information. Much of what was said tonight was pretty much what I was going to say also, so I won't repeat it. But I would like to make one correction of Mr. Wong. He said there was no documents presented at the planning board meeting, and that is not true. There was a letter from Northwest Real Estate Corporation. John Vance, who is the senior developer of that corporation, who wrote a letter and gave it to the planning, uh, department for the city, stating that he had a concern about a 312 roof pitch. Now, Northwest, at that time, we were negotiating on a 30 to 40 unit multifamily apartment building. Since that time, and after the planning board meeting, we have signed contracts. So presently, we are looking at building a 30 to 40 unit apartment building in City View Heights, and it will have a 512 roof pitch. In addition to that, I am also working with another developer who is looking at building 14 homes. Now, those, those plans are still up in the air, whether they'll be manufactured, modular, or picked up. But we are working on that project as well, and there'll be 14 homes coming in. Hopefully, if all goes well, then they too will have a 512 roof pitch. As long as I've been working in, with City View Heights, I have never been asked if someone could build a 312. Code has been 512. City code is 612. That was established back in the 1990s when manufactured homes first came to Trinidad. Those codes were implemented by Carl Gabelston, who was the city planner, and Jim Feltes, who was the city manager at that time. I believe my Valentine would, may remember that. So that is why we now have a 512. At the time, when that code was implemented, we already started building. Our homes already was coming in with a 512 roof pitch. And that is how we became eligible for the variance. We were already grandfathered in. Any 312 in City View Heights that you're referring to is not part of City View Heights, although it's on San Pedro Street. It was private property. We did not develop that. It was already in existence. And so those homes were put up by a private owner. Just to clarify, since that time, I'm concerned, and I have spoken to several appraisers in the area, as well as the Department of Regulatory Agency Appraisal Licensing Board, trying to get as much information as I can about appraisals. Unfortunately, we don't have a house with a 312 roof pitch to appraise. I have been told the only way to look at that would be to get a market study of the whole area, and that has not been done. But I do believe, just as Northwest Real Estate Corporation believes, that by bringing in 312s, we will lower values to City View Heights. The appearance would give the appearance of more of a trailer court than a residential housing development. In addition, we are looking, the city of Trinidad is looking at changing building codes. So we do not know what the future's going to hold, but if the thousand square foot home should, let's say, go down to an 800 square foot home, and tonight you give approval for a 312 roof pitch, we could then be looking at 800 square foot homes with a 312 roof pitch, and that, to me, is a tiny home. And that also will affect City View Heights, and it will affect future developments. Any development I have worked with, and I have worked with many, as well as investors that have come and gone in and out of Trinidad, the first thing they ask about are the building codes. Before they even purchase property, they want to know the building codes. So, uh, you know, I'm, I'm sorry that Mr. Francisco did not obtain that information. He should have received that from his real estate agent at that time. It's very unfortunate. But the only reason he has presented the need for a change in roof pitch is for monetary reasons. And we have never given a variance based solely on monetary reasons, to the best of my knowledge. Although if he is having monetary difficulties, I believe he can come to the city council and he can ask for your help, maybe with tax fees or something else. We don't have to change the whole design of a development because the developer is struggling financially. I just don't see that as the purpose of a variance code. In addition, I was at the planning board meeting back in December, and it was repeated over and over again that the decisions the planning board made was based solely on code. There was no other reasons. There was no alternative motive there. It was based solely on code. Mr. Moderno has built almost every house on Undergarden Street, with the exception of Mr. Francisco's homes and one other house that was built by, I believe, Mr. Smith. Other than that, every house that went in up there was built by Moderno Homes. We never asked for a variance. See, every house was approved by the city, inspected by the city inspected. City plans have been submitted, and those houses went in. So I don't know where these numbers are coming from, that we have a 312 and a 412 or two 312s. I've never seen that happen. And I can guarantee you on my section of City View Heights, it's never happened. We have nothing other than a 512 roof pitch. And for clarification purposes only, please keep in mind, counsel, Undergarden Street is not City View Heights. That name has been changed. It is Orchard Square. You will not find any tax notices or anything else up at the courthouse on this City View Heights. Anything you find will have my name to it. They are Orchard Square. And Orchard Square has covenants. Now, the covenant does not address a roof pitch, but it does address the square footage of homes. I just wanted to share that with you. And I thank attorney Les Dowd because most of what he spoke about was my concern. So I'm very grateful he's been nice, and thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wong.
That's all I have to say.
Is there anyone else in the, in the audience that would like to speak? Take that, Dan. Your end is called.
I would request an opportunity to make a response to the testimony that's been given. Your testimony was taken. Testimony was, I would, just for the record, I'd like to make a remark. The testimony was taken, um, a testimony in opposition to my client's application. I would like a chance to respond.
Well, you've already given us a lot of information prior to...
I, you know, I understand, I think they were...
Let me refer to Mr. Dowd. Is there something?
Well, it, it really wasn't testimony. These people were not sworn in.
Correct.
Um, it was more public comment. And I, you know, it is, it, it is something that counsel is considering. And I would say, can you, if it's okay, there, can you...
I will try to keep myself pretty brief.
Okay.
Okay, but I mean, so the major issue that, that an opposition seems to be property values, okay? I would submit that nobody's really within expertise has said that there's going to be property value decreases, right? But even if that's true, what it puts counsel in the position of doing is a protector of property values. Protector of property values is not one of the purposes enumerated in the statute for which the state of Colorado has given counsel the ability to regulate, uh, zones. It says specifically, "Order of Safety, Morals, and General Welfare." It's not protect property values.
Mr. Dowd, I'd just like to say that the, the comments made by the people who just spoke are not the positions of the planning and zoning board or the position of this counsel. And no one's talking about the preservation of, of, of property values that is a decision maker with respect to this. So it's not really evidence what they just said. So, anyway, I'm sorry, Mr. Wong, but I, but if you, I guess if you'd like to just kind of conclude.
Give me another, as a conclusion, please.
Yeah, so essentially, look, um, you know, at the end of the day, there are good reasons to grant this application. And this, as the Board of Adjustment, under statute, Colorado gives you wide latitude to apply the ordinances in almost any way you choose to promote their purpose and intent, which is defined in actual Section 14, some of the very first things, sell why we're doing zoning. Right? And so the, the Colorado Legislature has said a long time ago, we're going to allow boards of adjustment, right? The commission, they apply the statute. Boards of adjustment, much more latitude is specifically granted to boards of adjustment. And I would say to harmonize the application of the ordinances with the plan that is well within counsel's discretion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Let me go ahead and repeat, as I said, it's the appeal of the decision applying zoning variance commission filed by Southwest Development Group, LLC. Various applications, 2021, variance 16, for five residential lots at 204. 208, 216, 312, and 321 on Undergarden Street. There seems to be some issue there. The outcome you're seeking, you're varying to a 312 pitch on the structures. The outcome is seeking a variance in 312 pitch on the structures, and like you were just saying, he was just saying is that as the Board of Appeals, it grants us the counsel, grants us the ability to have more leeway to our decision. As the planning and zoning, did they apply the statute, are they comprehensive plan, and statutes according to city code? I think that's something we need to consider when we move this forward. So with that being said, we have two recommendations here, one or the other. One is to uphold planning and zoning recommendations, that would be one motion. The second motion, we believe to the motion to appeal. So I'm interrogating a motion for one or the other.
I make a motion then, the first.
To follow up planning and zoning?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion, counsel? Holgo, please.
DePoto?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
No.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. It said that the motion to appeal has been denied, and we welcome you to continue the building, I know it's an issue, but we'll go through the process for the... Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn. Second.
Okay.
Holgo?
Vano?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.